Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 7th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the January 7th, 2025, 7:30 PM, public meeting for the Norfolk Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public. We are meeting via Zoom only this evening. This is an out-of-sequence Planning Board meeting. So we are not in the meeting room tonight at Town Hall. This is meeting one of three, I believe, this month, guys. So this is the out-of-sequence. We normally meet next week, but we will not be meeting next week. We'll be meeting the 21st and the 27th as well.
And the meeting on the 21st is Zoom as well, Zoom only as well, and then in person on Monday, the 27th.
Awesome. Thank you. So given that we don't have any public hearings, we don't have any appointments, but do we still do roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay. So given that we are meeting via Zoom, we'll do roll call attendance. So when I say your name, please say here. Gary Sullivan?
Here.
Eric Diamond?
Here.
Former member and current associate member Gary Searle.
Here.
And myself, Melissa Mayo, the clerk of the Planning Board. And we also have with us Richard McCarthy, the town planner, and Betsy Fijol, the administrative assistant.
Great.
So we don't, like I mentioned, we don't have any public hearings tonight. We don't have scheduled appointments. So this is really just, it's like I said, meeting one of three this month. We have a lot of things to cover on the Planning Board. So we're working towards a deadline for the accessory dwelling unit zoning bylaw, as well as a few other items that we're prepping for town meeting this coming May. So we have a lot of details to review about topics that have been covered in other previous board meetings. So if anyone is, you know, just tuning in now and is confused or has questions about the things that we're talking about, feel free to use the raise hand feature in Zoom or post a question or comment in the Zoom chat, and we'll stop periodically to answer any questions that may arise throughout the meeting.
Great. And then just to kind of couple on that, although the agenda posted has quite a bit of content on it, tonight is really just related to the accessory dwelling unit discussion, so. Just for clarification purposes.
Were you just putting those on there in case they happen to come up in conversation so we could chat about them?
I wish I would tell you that was the case. I think I didn't tell Betsy.
Yeah, I wasn't quite sure what, just in case we were touching upon those tonight, I put them on. So that's what I figured. Okay. Thank you.
So as it works out, it's probably well, good. So what I thought I would do is we did have, and you should have in your share folder. I know I did receive some, we received comments, I received comments, sorry, from Gary, which I did include those. He commented to me directly. I put those in the shared drive. I've shared those with Tony Riley, who was with us tonight as well from Town Council's office as we go through
Hey, Tony.
accessory dwelling unit bylaw draft. And then I think maybe the easiest way to start is I put in your shared drive a edited version with some comments with the RM initial, and I can screen share it. And I think that way the public can see it, and then we can kind of walk through that one first. And then we'll probably flip back and forth between Gary's comments. Actually, I think Gary's comments might show.
I only had a few comments.
Yeah, yeah. No, I know. And if it's, if it's not, we can, we can bounce back and forth.
Let's scroll through them quicker. I can just rattle them off quickly to people as well.
Yeah, and I think too, the document, I'm not sure what the RM one is, Rich, but I know for the one that Gary commented on, that was, I think it was my latest document that I had put comments and edits into, so that probably has both of ours in there. For when we get to it.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe you did it after the fact, after I sent it to.
No, I think, just clarify, I think Gary's comments are based off the one that Tony had prepared
Oh, okay.
back in December, that I shared with everybody to comment by the end of, end of December. So that, that's the version that that Gary commented on. I mean, if you want to make it simple, I can actually share that one first, and then we can go to the other one. Your pleasure, whatever, which way you want to go.
The other, the document that we were, that I created originally that you and I were working on, is that the one you're talking about?
It's morphed into what it's transitioned between edits to what is 310-615 version three? Yeah, so.
Okay, so the actual bylaws in the, yeah, let's just go through that then, if it's, if it's morphed into that.
All right. So let me just make sure I'm screen sharing first. And one of the things as before we start recapping, one is that you've already put on the calendar, January 27th, for the public hearing on the bylaw. The goal for tonight is to come out of this with a vote as the final draft that will be presented at the public hearing on the 27th of January regarding the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. The state is currently receiving public comments on their draft regulations. And there are some things that we'll talk about as they, as they relate to those draft regulations. And some, some things might change. So as we go through and get to the end of this, very well, maybe a situation where the Planning Board would open the public hearing on the 27th of January, continue it into February, and then see where the final regulations land in terms of how we might be able to address a few different items as we go through it. So just put that out there as we start, just as we talk through it, so. So you do see a drafted red line version in front of you?
Yes.
All right, great. So this is the one that, like I said, that Tony had prepared for us, sent out to the board members. And walking through, and we can go through, we'll go through this, but also I want to touch on a few points that I have made. One of the suggestions was that in terms of the terminology, that we would stick with consistently principal dwelling unit throughout. You'll see, as in the middle, on the second and last line here, it says primary residence. Thought being that we probably should stick to the same terminology, which is, you could do it either way, but I think it might be easier in terms of.
Yeah, Rich, principal, principal dwelling is the term that's used in the statute, so.
Yes.
It's probably good just to keep it the same in our bylaw.
That makes sense. Definitely want to be consistent throughout.
Yep. So same thing with these two, you know, so again, it's principal residence, and then the last line, principal dwelling, we would just call principal dwelling instead of primary dwelling. And as I go through, if you want to just pause on some language, we can, you know, please feel free to say hole or something of that nature. All right. So I do want to talk about the Airbnb. Back in December, I think there was some discussion from the board about not necessarily including that provision at that point, or that was a discussion back in December. I've carried it forward in this version, and the reason why I carried it forward is to talk a little bit about it. So for instance, you can prohibit Airbnb in the accessory dwelling unit. That's, that is an option towns can enact through the, through the statute. If we know, discussion the last December meeting was like, well, we don't know if there really be a problem, and so perhaps not address it now. However, if a problem does arise by not having it in there from the beginning, you, we could end in a situation where we have some that are out there that are protected, and then they could be short-term rentals, and now we find that we would, we think it's wise to address it, and so now we're in situations where they're going to remain protected a short term, and then the new ones going forward would be prohibited. And so that, that's a, that's a primary piece of this, why I think it makes sense to have it from the beginning, so you don't have this in-between situation, whereas you might, you could have ones that are allowed to do it, and then others that can't. In addition to that, if the board were contemplating adding it down the road, somebody could come in again and race and get an ADU, and then in turn use it as a rental unit because you couldn't respond quick enough to make a zoning bylaw amendment, advertise for a public hearing, etc. So similar with the situation we're in right now. So my suggestion would be to, to keep it in there. I think there's some good basis to do that.
Just a quick point on that, because I did a lot of, I think I was the one that was more vocal about that at our last meeting. And, you know, taking a more libertarian approach to it, and like, let's see what happens. But since then, I was, I spent the last two weeks in North Conway, New Hampshire, and North Conway and Conway had some issues with ADUs becoming STRs, and you know, and then it's more research, and it seems to be, I don't want to call it an issue, but it's definitely a viable path people will take if they think they can squeeze some money out of their property to do short-term rentals in an ADU. And to your point, Rich, it kind of becomes illegal gray area of grandfathering in and, and, you know, just kind of always being there, even if you proactively or you retroactively go and try to fix that. So I think I, my original point was, I would like to see some sort of provision protecting against STRs, especially in relative to ADUs, and then I kind of talked myself out of that, and now I've talked myself back into that.
Okay. No, I think that, and by the way, just for, I went on Airbnb just to check out Norfolk, and I know there is one active Airbnb right now. There was one previously, which they had sold their property, and there could have been other ones along the way. And one of the, call it, if you will, the, hey, what's nice about Airbnb in Norfolk was they highlighted the outlet malls as amenity in the area, so. So there's probably a lot more things that we don't necessarily think about that could be an attraction for Airbnb in Norfolk down the road, particularly obviously with. So I think is everybody okay keeping, I don't want to belabor the point, but.
Yeah, I think I tend to have the opposite. I know I completely appreciate the more libertarian approach. But I tend to, just knowing the town, I think it is, it's not necessarily my perspective, it's what I hear from other folks, you know, they really want to keep the town as close to, you know, the way that it was when they moved in, what they loved when they moved here, and so I get, I get nervous about creating a change, like suddenly we can have Airbnbs. Having ADUs is already going to be a big change. But I think now when we say, oh, and by the way, we're going to have Airbnbs, I think people are going to have a reaction to that. So I'm okay with it. I tend to, you know, err on the more cautious side for things like this. We could always add it in later. Or if we get feedback at the public hearing from residents, you know, that they overwhelmingly would really like that, we could certainly, I guess we could talk about it then, but I tend to like, just take baby steps with zoning changes.
Eric, Gary?
I agree. We got to discuss it and put it in there to, as a, as a starting place, rather than be quiet on it and see what may come out of it that's unexpected.
Okay. So then the next one that I had highlighted for possible modification was, so if you see, it's highlighted, it says accessory structures. So we do have accessory structures already in town. I think with what we saw in the proposed regulations, and Tony could jump in just after I get done a moment, is that ADUs do need to be accessory to a principal dwelling unit. There was some concern initially that you might be able to condo it off and have, essentially it could be almost like a primary use. The regulations seem, and I don't imagine they'll be more liberal about, liberal about this, that they do need to be accessory to a principal dwelling, either attached or detached. So I was thinking about just making this a accessory to the principal dwelling unit, just to kind of create distinction between accessory structures and just for the reader, essentially, you know, user who's going to read through this to know it's accessory to the residence, it's not accessory structure, because we could very well see accessory structures that will potentially get converted to ADUs as well, so.
And also, your bylaw has a different, you know, setback regulation for accessory structures. But for ADUs, you can, you know, require the same setbacks as the principal dwelling in whatever zoning districts they go in, so it's better to change it as Rich suggested, to take out the accessory structure phrase, because then people might think that they can get the lesser setbacks, because accessory structures have their own, you know, regulations for setbacks. So just saying it's accessory to the primary, primary dwelling is, I think, the way to go.
Does that make sense to everyone?
Yep.
Sorry, I'm just reading this again. They will remain as accessory.
A clearly subordinate statement strikes me. Is that a visual perception or plot plan? Is that from the state where it says clearly subordinate? Does it actually need to be smaller when I look at two structures? It's not in this phrasing here, but it's.
Yeah, so the subordinate term, you know, comes from the, you know, when courts look at whether a structure is accessory or not, and, you know, there's a lot of, you know, cases where people dispute these things. You know, one of the factors they look to is that whether it is subordinate to the primary use. So if, you know, if you have a house and you want to build a garage, obviously that's you know, a subordinate use to the primary purpose of the principal residence. There's some cases where people can try to build things that are way too large, and they try to call them a garage, but they're so large and they're used for, you know, a whole bunch of reasons where, you know, a court might say, you know, you're calling this a garage, but it's not really subordinate to the primary use of the property as a single-family house. It's really like a second primary use, because there's so much going on and it's so big.
So with the intent in using that language, because we're also limiting it by 900 square feet max, would the intent be that I can look at a piece of property and I clearly see which one is subordinate to the other?
Well, you shouldn't be able to, right? Because it's 900 square feet or half of, 900 is the max, but it's really, it's half of, 50% of the gross living space square footage, right? So would, it should always be smaller.
Yeah, it's always gonna, yeah, it's gonna have to be smaller.
Okay. So I should be, when the statement clearly subordinate is more around the visual appearance of the, of the two, is that correct?
I think, I think you can look at size and use in a general sense, but I think subordinate to is really just another way of saying separate to. It's, it's kind of the same thing.
Okay. And there is, because it's always the lesser of the two sizes, either half of the square footage of the primary or up to 900 square feet, it is never, if you had a 900 square foot house right now and I wanted to build an ADU, I can only build a 450 square foot ADU?
That's right.
Okay.
I got a follow-up related to that. Is it 900 square feet of living space, or is it, would a, a new garage space also count towards that 900 square feet?
Say gross square footage, Tony?
Yes.
I also asked.
Floor area.
Gross floor area.
Of the principal.
Not including access hallways that might be common to both primary and ADU structures. So if it's inside my house and I have to create a common hallway, or I enclose a stairway, made it a stairwell on the outside of the building to get up to the second floor, that's not really living space, but is that part of the equation? And do we want to define what the equation is somewhere in our language?
I guess I was leaning towards, could you build a two-car garage and then put 900 square foot above it?
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I think that was one of the four or five scenarios that was in Melissa's tire crews.
Yep.
Right. It's a lot more than 900 square feet total, but it's only 900 square foot of living area.
Yeah, if you're using the garage, you know, as a garage, and you're only, you know, improving the second floor to build an ADU, you can do that.
Could you build the whole thing from scratch?
You mean turn the garage into an ADU?
No, a brand-new garage with an ADU on top.
Sure.
Yeah, so long as it's half the size of the principal dwelling or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller.
For the actual ADU, but the garage itself.
Right, right. Yeah, the garage could be, yeah, it could be like a three-car garage, or I guess a four-car garage, but the living space upstairs with the floor area can only be, you know, 900 or less, or 450 if it's this.
So, so does there need to be more clarification of 900 square foot of livable space, or?
Well, the statute, the statute uses the term gross floor area. There's probably a definition of that in the building code. I just don't know it off the top of my head, but I can check that to see how that's defined.
Yeah, more, and the more conservative would be the gross floor area, because you're if you get the net, you could take out, like I know we have net floor area, where we'll take corridors out, mechanical space, those kind of different things, but this one is based on gross floor area? But Tony, yeah, have Tony double-check and see.
So the definition is, so gross floor area, the sum of the areas of all floors of the building, including basement cellars, mezzanine, and intermediate floored tiers, and penthouses of headroom height, measured from the exterior faces of exterior walls, or from the center line of walls separating buildings, but excluding covered walkways, open-roofed areas and porches, exterior terraces or steps, chimneys, roof overhangs, and similar features. So I think basically, like in layman's terms, that's basically, you know, the inside layout of your ADU, you measure that floor area, and it doesn't, and it sounds like the definition doesn't cover like an outdoor covered stairwell. Or something like that, but it's just for the measuring from the, you know, the space on the interior walls.
Yeah, you know, what's interesting about that too, the way that they've worded that, I think if we said livable space or something like that, sometimes what people will do is finish, there was an example of this recently near here, but they'll finish the square footage that they're allowed to have, and then have like an enormous unfinished area and say, oh, that's storage, and then build more bedrooms or bathrooms later without a permit. So I'm wondering if that's why they worded it this way.
So you're saying it's a storage room for, for a bedroom set?
Storage room until the building inspector is done typically, and then they have someone go in and make more space. It happens, but okay, so we just want to make sure that it's that it's the actual ADU, that it's, okay. So you have that definition, Tony, so I guess.
I think, and I think that's really, when these applications come in, I think that's up for the, you know, the building inspector knows how to interpret the building code, and he'll be able to tell if something's too big, you know, by looking at the plans. So I think that'll be more in, in his purview to kind of monitor each one rather than, you know, the Planning Board.
I'm gonna go next to number four, which in relation to somebody, if the allowance of more, that one ADU, which would, would be through a special permit. So this provision is in here that says that you have to have additional 10,000 square feet of land area for an additional or second, second, two or more ADUs. If you can see, if you see my footnotes over here on the right-hand side, my comments, I think it's probably not a bad place to talk a little bit about why we want to potentially consider open the hearing and continue it, is because right now, the way the regulations are proposed, it's very generous in terms of where you can do, the statute says residential zoning district. The draft regulations talk about residential zoning district, which may include a single-family dwelling by special permit, variance, or otherwise zoning relief, I think is the term.
Yeah, so Rich, I have it here. It says, so the regulations define single-family residential zoning district as any zoning district where single-family residential dwellings are a permitted or an allowable use, including any zoning district where single-family residential dwellings are allowed as of right by special permit, variance, waiver, or other relief or discretionary zoning approval. So what that definition means, because they included, you know, variances, is that ADUs can be built as of right in any zoning district in town, because in theory, you could always get a variance to build a house in a district where it might not be allowed, so. I think there were some comments, at least I've heard, that, you know, some folks have submitted comments on this issue, and they're unhappy with it, because when the legislature passed the law, it was only intended for single-family residential districts, and then when the regulations come out, it basically covered every single part of town, so there's a chance that that definition might change, and hopefully come back more in line with what the, the law actually says.
Yeah, because the way our present zoning is, our Schedule of Use regulations, the residential districts, you, single-family dwellings are permitted use, as you know. But in the B3 and B4, dwellings are permitted use, as you know, um but in the B three and B four. It does allow a single family dwelling, this is talking about a new one, um via special permit through the zoning board of appeals. So um pausing on this one is important, I think, for a couple of perspectives, one would be um you may only have to allow by right an A D U in the B three and B four. And then uh two or more in the B three and the B four district. Right now, it's across the board, every district in town. So if they hopefully see the wisdom of not being so broad about this, then there'll be a little more guardrails, so constraints on where A D Us can go town wide, so this could very well change, now if you want to open it up town wide. Certainly can, I don't think that's that would probably suggest that's not what people would would want to see in ten.
When it came out originally and recently, I mean, you and I were just on that training, what, a couple of weeks ago? Um and it was, it was always single family districts, single family housing districts, did you, so that changed?
That well. And it changed in the way where the the regulations just added a definition of single family residential zoning district that makes no sense and has never been applied in zoning law, so. Yeah, so I don't know, I don't, it's, we have to see what they're gonna do with it, because the definition makes no sense, it just means everywhere in town and that's obviously not what the legislature intended.
Right, and it doesn't make sense, the other thing too, um so I noted here, the public comment for to provide feedback on the the guidance or the regulations that were provided from E O H L C closes on the tenth of January, so is that when you're saying people are submitting comments, is that what you're talking about submitting it through? The public comment. So should we do that as well then to just, I mean, I don't know if having, I assume having more of the same comment would be helpful, right, if you see it from a bunch of different towns that all have the same issue?
Uh in theory, maybe, um but it doesn't hurt. If 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 that's what, you know, if the board wanted to try to submit some comments, you know. That might be helpful and I would suggest that if the board decides to do that. You know, you should pick one or two discrete issues just to focus on and, you know, not send in a very long um you know, response. You know, criticizing the entire regulations, even though there is a lot to crit- criticize, but um I would pick, you know, maybe one or two issues that you could focus on, just so it's uh concise.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Yeah, so I think probably will do is when we get to the end, kind of going through the draft, we can kind of revisit that in terms of comments, again, you are residents and citizens of Massachusetts, so you're certainly free uh to submit comments on your own, you know, just like I planned to do and my own resident capacity, I was a professional planner, so I think the more the merrier, I think frankly. Cause this is it's M B T A zoning two point O. You know, deviation from what the statute is, right, so that that's kind of the principal issue, but so anyway, I wanted to raise that, cause I, again, we we don't want to, I I think it's wise to not close out the hearing, so if you want to be a little bit more tighter, which I suspect people would want to do that. Um we'll give a little time and hopefully they revise the uh the regulations. And then Tony, not suggesting this, but you very well could keep it tighter if you want anyway. You know, that's probably another deeper conversation we should probably talk about, not tonight necessarily, but I'm gonna keep going, so. That was kind of the same in terms of residential zoning district that we have highlighted. And just to kind of recap, um in terms of this section here, design requirements. I think clearly what we've, you know, in terms of attending those webinars and then looking at the regulations. If you're a community that doesn't regulate single family home design. Then going and head and really digging into A D U design is probably a slippery slope. Because you're treating them different than you would a single family home, some towns are very they do look at single family home design, which is pretty uh no, depends how you look at it, but that's a pretty strong power to do that, a single family home design, so that's why this design piece is not as heavy.
Yeah, can I ask a question about that, so the design review board, I was looking at that section of our of the town website. And they have dra- they have a draft document, but was that ever completed, is there a final document? That explains kind of the best practices and like, do we enforce that? Because I I mean, we give feedback when folks come to, you know, our meetings if we don't like the look of something, but I don't, I I haven't actually seen from beginning to end, the official process where the design review board gets involved.
So there I my memory on this is that's been drafted for the past seven plus years I've been here. They haven't finished it off. Um so I I don't, I mean, maybe they might, but they certainly haven't as of yet, well, just they're not, it's not intended for design review on single family homes, though. If there's a residential component that makes use, that's a different situation, but but they're, they weren't it wasn't a, nor the bylaws, the way it's on the books right now. They don't look at single family home design either.
Okay, I couldn't find anything except the design review board stuff, which was a draft, so I just wanted to see if I was missing something. But yeah, so if we, basically what we heard on that training um was that anything that we don't do, that we don't require for single family homes, we also cannot require for the A D Us and especially in terms of design, so. So that's at least our guideline to go by, so since we don't have that prescribed, we can't really we can't add that for A D Us.
I think I just want to add on that point, um there's a policy consideration that the board has to make because um the statute says that the board can do site plan review for an A D U. The regulations say you cannot apply any si- site plan standards that are more strict than the site plan standards for singer, single family residences.
Right, which we don't look at currently on the planning.
And no town does site uh uh for, you know, ninety nine percent of the towns do not do site plan review for single family houses, so in, you know, in my view reading the statute versus the regulations, that just conflicts. So I think the board, you know, kind of has to make a decision of which one to follow. Um I suppose you could choose not to do site plan review, but if you wanted to do site plan review, I think it's um despite what the regulations say, I think it would still be defensible, because we could point back to um well, that's what the statute says. Um and no one does site plan review for single family houses, so you know there's obviously some kind of authority here to do a very basic site plan. But that's up to the board, I mean, it's it's conflicting regulation versus statute, so um I don't think there's a right answer or a wrong answer.
I tend to lean more conservatively on this, like um or cautiously, I should say, um just like with the other ones, because I think it's it's gonna be a big change. And just like with the signed by law, um when we updated the signed by laws, we purposely put in well, it's a special permit, which we can't have here, but you know, basically saying there's a group of people that are going to look at this before it just ends up somewhere in town, um and I think um I heard from a lot of people that made them feel better about it, so I tend to lean more um cautiously on that, but what is, what does everybody else think?
Kind of sounds like it's written in there so that we can do it.
Yeah, just to my my feeling is unchanged, that the whole purpose of this is to be enabling and not restrictive, so that's my guidance to get people to be able to pay their bills, let them build A D Us. Um I agree, if it doesn't exist for residential houses, I don't think we should be doing a P A D Us. There are circumstances, though, where people have to provide site plans, like when there's uh issues with conservation commission or something like that. Um but I don't think we should be outside of the guidance that exists for residential houses, just my opinion.
So Tony, just to clarify a little bit, um so the statute allows for the site plan review. Um the draft regulations, it talks about design standards that that would be considered a unreasonable restriction regulation?
Yeah, well, so it's two, it's two things in the regulations, design standards and site plan review, um one at a time, but both are listed as presumptive unreasonable regulations. Um the the issue with the site plan is that the statute allows it, the regulation seems to say it doesn't, but.
I'm thinking about this, Gary, the way that you just described it, and I think if we have all of the setbacks defined, which we've already discussed, and we can't really have much input into the design, because we don't do that right now for single family. Then we've pretty much done all that we are going to be able to do, right, I mean, looking at a site plan, seeing where the drainage is. I mean, Bob and the other teams can do that, we don't really need to be a holdup.
Correct, yep, I I think it gets back to the building inspector from that point on, unless there's, um I don't know, what did we say, there's um if you need, if you wanted more than one, you have to get a special permit, things, things requiring special permits. But it's provided by right, so I I s- again, my guidance in hearing it coming down from the governor is i- it should be enabling and not restrictive.
Yeah, I mean, the two or more, we definitely need to have something in there.
And and I had other questions about, I I I knew that there, and I don't want to digress too much here. Um but one of the questions I had was about corporate ownership, uh I knew that we couldn't restrict um uh like forcing uh live in ownership. Um they're still enabled to rent out both pieces of property, but I there's just an awful lot going on nationwide with buying up of apartments and condos and starting to raise rates um across all major cities, uh and I don't know if this could just be something that turns bad, and I thought limiting uh corporate entities from buying up properties in our town um to build A D Us on them. Is that, is there some way of restricting that?
No, I I, you know, I I think I'm sympathetic to the, you know, the policy. Ask, but there's no law in Massachusetts that would allow this, I mean, other states have started to enact them. Um a couple have around the country and I don't really know what they say, I just know it's the general thing that, you know, big corporations can't just go up and buy house, like a bunch of houses in towns and, you know, do whatever with them, but um as of now in Massachusetts, you can't control who who or what kind of entity, you know, buys a house, anyone can buy a house, so you are right that it might be the case where, you know, an LLC or a corporation you know, purchases a purchases a house and puts in A D Us and is renting the whole thing and it all becomes kind of a business operation, um that that probably will happen, you know, um.
There's no way we're allowed to stop anything. Simple enough. So the design controls, we're not gonna do anything with that. Is that correct?
We really can't.
You know, one, just one point on that, I I agree that it can't, because you don't have any for single family houses, um you know, it, while it might be an unenforceable provision, you know, you might be able to include something that says you know, the A D U has to be of a similar character as the principal dwelling. And, you know just kind of hope that people design them that way, I mean, if they're not in the same character, you can't really do much about it or you know, change their design or help them with their design, but at least as like a somewhat of a policy statement within the bylaw where, you know, that might nudge people into making the A D Us at least look like something close to the principal dwelling. Um but you don't have to have that either, it's just just a suggestion.
So in terms of at least the way this draft is laid out, um is that one is the presumption here, we're moving forward as A D Us would go through a site plan review process. As Tony pointed out right now, um at least under the regulations, that's considered an unreasonable regulation, however. That is in the statute, so the law says you can do it, although it conflicts with the regulations. And from that process, we're putting in where it someone wouldn't be subject to, and this is by the by right A D U. Um it wouldn't be a public hearing, but they would be subject, you know, they would require uh attendance at a public meeting held by the planning board. Um we're proposing that it be noticed, given to a butters. Direct butters and butters across the street, not the same as if it was a special permit, but so there is a little bit of a neighborhood process in proposing in this draft right now, which may kind of give proposers uh consideration how it may look in terms of the surrounding neighborhood, not guaranteeing it, but but at least a it's, there is a little bit more public process, the way this is being proposed, review process, shorter design standards.
So I'm just wondering if, like, what is the value that we're that we're adding there as the board, right, because if we can't have input into the design and we're defining the setbacks and, you know, all of that will be written out. Um we already have the driveway, like everything is figured out from that perspective, unless they wanted to do a separate driveway and do a curve, and then we'd have to figure that out, but I just wonder what value we're adding. Um we're gonna look at it and look at, you know, like stormwater drainage and like, do you have all of your utilities in there? Is it helpful, is it helpful to Bob for us to see it first, is it helpful for the homeowner, I mean, if, you know, then if a butters do get notified and then they come to the meeting and then they want to talk about what's gonna be there, that that's probably like the only thing I can think of that would be helpful. Unless there's another benefit maybe to Bob. Making sure that we have, we've covered everything before it comes to his desk, but am I missing something there?
No, I I mean, there's definitely a benefit. Well, two, I'll I'll suggest two. One is, yeah, the Bob, um but the benefit to an butter, so it, you know, again, if maybe there is a drainage issue that we don't know about, we certainly, those, we do get people pop in our office from time to time complaining about, you know, how somebody has put it in the driveway. How they graded it and it's created some runoff issues. Excuse me, but it's not subject to any permitting, probably, it's not jurisdictional to Excuse me, but it's not subject to any permitting, probably, it's not jurisdictional to. You know, the conservation commission or anything like that. So there's, there's a benefit, I would, would say to adjacent. Neighbors, a- and Bob too, I mean. It could vet out some of those issues as opposed to him trying to one-off. Which become used one-offs on these, these topics sometimes.
That's true, I was thinking we're gonna be kind of a cog in the wheel, you know, slowing things down and we won't be adding much value, but the abutter. Being part of the process, that, that's definitely valuable, especially when it's new, and. And it's probably wouldn't slow anything down, because if it gets to Bob. And then he has all of the same challenges that we all as a board have reviewed and, you know, called out beforehand. It's probably one in the same, right, timeline wise. Could be longer if, but, you know, Bob's a super busy guy all day long, I mean, if they have to wait for one person to get back to them. For all these things that they didn't do, you know, they didn't calculate correctly, or whatever it may be, that could actually take longer than just having us go through it.
Yeah, and I think it, it would have. Again, it helps, it definitely helps Bob, but it helps in general, right, so. They would take things into consideration that they may not otherwise, you know. And so it has to be a little more thought out in terms of it, you know.
I, I might think is because we're just enacting this as well, we might want to keep track of it for a while, so aside from being a forum. For a butters, for Bob, uh, you know, let's say fifty ADUs get built over the next year. Uh, we might want to change something, but then we have firsthand exposure to what those fifty were. The butters having the same issues over and over again, I'm just saying, otherwise, we're only gonna get insight. To be able to change the language downstream, we're gonna get it secondhand. Uh, so I think it, I, I think it's good to be involved for a while, even if we don't have a lot of, of influence. Over um, what people are actually doing on their property.
Yeah, that makes sense, I mean, that's the approach we took with the sign bylaw as well, you know, stay involved for a while until we have some best practices, so that makes sense. I just wanted to make sure we weren't gonna be slowing things down and not adding much value, but that is valuable.
Oh, probably slow things, no, I'm joking.
No, I don't think so, I mean, think about it, when you, I have so many like permits all the time that. You know, if there's one little tiny thing missing, it might be three weeks until you hear back on it, you know, because every, the inspector's offices are so big. Um, so maybe not, hopefully not.
Well, though, and, and so in terms of being aware of timing, right, so one of the things is, one is. It's a public meeting, so we're not putting it through a, a public hearing process, which. If it were, you know, it's fourteen days, which is actually more in terms of. Getting notice in the newspaper and sending notice to. To the, the butters and, and so forth, and then. It's fourteen days after the close of the meeting for a decision, which again is faster in terms of a permanent process. As if it was, uh, like, say, site plan or even. Well, I suppose you're going for something, the ZVA, right? So, kind of put that into it, and so if you put a complete packet together. Um, let's say, all right, so you have the meeting on the twenty-first, right, um, this month. You might be able to come in. Thursday this week and be on the twenty-first agenda. If your. If your application is together, right, so.
Right, and then you don't have to pay for the, the newspaper, right, because we said we. We're not gonna do that, that's kind of.
Yeah, we're not, we're not doing that, which in this day and age is. Not much value anymore. And so, so we're building in, and, and that's applicable to the byright. It's a special permit, obviously a different situation, it's gonna be subject to the. The notice provisions under as a special permit and the timelines, et cetera, but.
I agree with this in terms of any kind of new construction, but is there any thought to. Waiving that for, um, you know. Re-classifying a space within an existing building that. Maybe not warrant all that work?
I know, that's.
Converting an existing attic?
Right.
Finished base.
Right. Concerned that way?
Sorry, I was talking at the same time, I, I thought it, uh, I was just commenting this really just applying for a building permit, is there something different about the? Building permit process if I'm converting my basement. Um, into a finished basement or converting it into an ADU, just the, the form itself just need to change?
I'm just wondering about the utilities, you know, how are you gonna segment them, is it gonna be part of the house, can it be part of the house still, or has that changed? Can you, can you share with the ADU, or do you have to have separate utilities completely?
So. Answer to that question, um, even though it's a good and important one. The regulations just say that the, whatever. That any requirement concerning utilities, safety and emergency access, that is more restrictive than state requirements. Is a unreasonable regulation. However, you know, because ADUs are new, there are no state requirements uh, about how to hook up. An ADU to, you know, your electricity or. Whatever sewer, so. That's, it's a good question, but that, I, I just don't know that there's an answer to it. Just have to figure out how to get power. Water and sewer septic to the ADU, and if they can make it work, then. Who pays the bills, uh, it, it's an open question and how they're paid.
Right, so do we just wanna have, do we just wanna do the site plan review for the detached or add-on, the additions? And then if it's an existing space, then that would be, I mean, that's pretty typical, especially finishing a basement or something over a garage, that's. You know, there's permits for that stuff. Every day, going through every building inspector's office. Do we want to just, do we want to specify which ones we need to review?
So it's a good. Tony, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's probably another one of those policy. Areas, so I would, so, for example, if I was to finish my. Basement. For. You know, my son. I could do it, you know, Bob's, you know, Bob, you know, as you know, as Bob has said, like, you could have more than one bedroom, one kitchen and so forth, so. Where it's a, uh, familiar situation, let's start. If it's an ADU, now it's a rental, could be open to anybody. So. I don't know. So, you know, well, I guess.
Build it, because if you just redo your basement and your son's gonna live in there. It might, you know. Probably doesn't have to be an ADU, but, you know, an ADU, it has to be self-contained with a separate entrance. So I think, you know, if someone was gonna redo their basement and try to turn it into an ADU, I. You know, I think they'd have to show like a separate entrance and that it's not. You know. Part of the main house, I mean, you know, th- these are difficult gray areas, but. Exists a difference between an ADU basement and then just a basement that you finish.
It would. At the thought, I mean. I guess I probably would. You know, you could, obviously the board decide, decision, but I would consider, you know. Still doing the review on them. Um, if it becomes an issue where, you know, it seems ridiculous to be able to do that. Um, to, again, to have to review those situations, because the same thing is gonna be applicable in some ways, right, so there's an ADU. Um, you're gonna want to make sure there's parking, off-street parking, the act, you know, adequate for that. For the ADU, the driveway space, there, they do have to address the. You know, sanitary side of things, either they have to modify their system, or they're gonna have to make changes. In their house themselves to be able to, to meet the design. Flow of a septic system. So that's gonna require, that could very well require. Albeit not maybe the same level of site plan that you would do. For what we're proposing here, you still gotta do some of the same things for a septic plant, some of the same. Things are shown on site plans, I mean, a, a septic plant?
Okay.
Melissa, answer your question, I mean. I, I think you could do site plan review for. XY category of ADU and then just have them go right to the building department for others, I think. It's just a policy decision for the board, i- if, if the board wants to do that, but I think if you're gonna do site plan, you can always, you know, just kind of. Put categories in what needs, needs site plan and what doesn't.
Okay, Eric, Gary, Gary, any thoughts on those, on that?
I, I think it's fine, I think there'll, there'll be issues with the, the connections, I don't know. How everything would be totally separate, and I, at, at some point, I understand the, um. The security issues around that, um. But I just think it's an undue burden to, uh, try and enable someone to remain in their, uh, house. Uh, to separate all the utilities out when you wouldn't normally do that if you were making, you know, a mother-in-law apartment. Uh, so I, I just shouldn't, I don't, I don't see it being that it needs to be more burdensome than that.
Yeah, well, you, I don't think you can require it, so. It's kind of up to the homeowner to try to figure out how to hook everything up, but, but you certainly cannot require. A particular kind of utility setup.
So we wanted to say, we review all of the site plans and then, you know, basically for those ones, it's gonna be, it should be pretty easy, we're looking at parking. We're looking at, you know, the, if there's any certain, I mean, I guess there wouldn't be any additional drainage issues, hopefully. Uh, but septic utilities, things like that, and then the hallway, making sure that there's an adequate hallway that meets the, the statute regulations.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna amend that slightly what I just said, um, as far. As utilities go, I don't think we can do it in the bylaw, but they still have to comply with the building code, so it'll be up to, you know, the building department to determine whether. Um, you know. All these things that are hooked up within the ADU are building code compliant, and as long as they're compliant with the building code, then they're fine.
Yeah, and I, I mean, it's a lot less confusing too, if we're not, if there's no selling off of other unit, right? Then you don't really have to worry about that as much, but like, right now, if you rent an apartment that, where the utilities are not segmented. Um, then you pay for all you, your utilities in the rent, right, like you can get a separate bill, so it could be just like that. If it was gonna be condoed off, uh, that would be a nightmare. But if that can't happen, that's really not an issue for us to figure out.
You okay with moving forward, reviewing them all?
I'm okay with that, and if anybody has any strong opinions the other way, I mean, I think we could get them in and out pretty quickly, because those aren't gonna be, it's like. Check, do you have this, 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 and this, as long as there's nothing. You know, nothing crazy, they could be in and out very quickly. Anybody have any strong feelings opposing my view?
No, I think you're right on, I think it'll be pretty quick.
I think there's some high-level statements, but I still don't see how we could control them, uh, Richard mentioned runoff. I would keep, you know, I, I think that's an issue, um, um, present, uh. Pervious versus impervious, um, on, on the ground, uh, absorption, but I, I. I can't see on our, our residential lots are so large, unless stu- stuff goes way back. And it could actually be an issue at some point, but there's probably a hit list of things we could make up that we would want to check. Quickly when it comes in front of the board to make sure nothing's really going to impact in a butter. Yeah, but, um. Yeah, I, I, I would be voting to review everything, even if it's just to give a quick thumbs up, or thumbs down. It's always gonna be a thumbs up, uh, perhaps, um, but yes, I, I think we should be reviewing it.
Yeah, and Bob has on his section of the website too, he does have some, you know, best practices and. Different things that are really helpful, so maybe we could just put that checklist there, um, you know, he even has. He must get a lot of questions about building decks, because he has a whole diagram of how to build a deck on there, there's a lot of helpful information, so that. That would be a good addition to his section.
Then the next item is, is one that I know Bobby commented, so clarifying that the. The site plan would be just only prepared by a licensed land surveyor, which, and then. In the, in the orange, I just add a couple more items that we probably would like to see. On, on the site plan, again, you know, above and below ground utilities, not that you're. Dictating them, but I, I know when you, um. I mean, the instances, people aren't thinking about those things, re- homeowners, and, you know, when. They do need to be shown on the plans. They do become helpful, because I know we've run into situations where, you know, somebody wants to put a deck and all of a sudden they're. You know, they're pretty close to their. Leach field for the septic system, or, you know, there's. Things that pop up, that they're not thinking about. So that seems reasonable to have that information as well. And then this is the bigger one. Sliding down to the use table, I know it's pretty busy, but. But essentially, um. The way the regulations are drafted. It's yes across the board. I think there's. Good reasoning to. To see how that shakes out, because if it tracks the statute, then. It would be, uh, yes in the residential district. As Tony, we don't know for sure, but Tony suggested earlier that. The regulations, they might drop the whole idea of variances and, but, you know.
Right, not the, not the document, the, I said it seems so messy, but I didn't mean the document, I meant the, uh. Like having just, I'm just thinking about, you know, the guys that come, the super nice guys that own the businesses on, um, Shire Drive. That come to our meetings every so often, like, does this mean that they could just behind their business have a little ADU? Like, you know, it's just like, that's, but I just feel like this is gonna be such a challenge. For us, I think, you know, when you think about it visually even, um. It's just like, we already have MBTA zoning, which, you know, passed in Norfolk, um, and we worked really hard on. Finding a thoughtful solution for that, and now ADUs, and now we're like, oh, just kidding, it's not just residential, it's literally anywhere on any lot. It's just like, you know, people are already very, very concerned about losing kind of that local, the. Village town character, farm town character, and this just goes, I feel like this is just a step too far beyond.
Yeah, I would. Agree, and that's why I think. You know. Proposing it, at least starting. With, I think, when I talked to Tony, it was, um. Yes, obviously in the residential district. Um, yes, in the B three and B four, because those, again, those are. Two districts where you could do a single-family home by special permit. But the rest of them, the C one, A, A, B, C, and D, C three, C four, C five, and six. Keep them knows. For now.
Yeah, so B three and B four then, so I'm just thinking through this, so they, they would have to already be a single-family home that gets built. Either it's already there, or it gets built by special permit through the approval process. And then this would just be by right to that property that was approved through the special permits, we're not saying that this would go through the special permit. Process, the actual, what do we call it, principal dwelling? Process, the actual, what do we call it, principal dwelling, that's the one that's going through that process, right?
The A D U, the, a single A D U would be going through the, would be a by right process.
Okay, I think I worked through this in my head, so it's the actual house. That would have to go through special permit in B three and B four, but then the, the A D U is by right, comes with that house if they wanna build it.
Yes, I know it's kind of.
And you, you do need to have a primary residence in place before you can build an A D U?
Yeah.
You do.
Yeah, but the, um, the regulation, the draft regu- regulation defines principal dwelling. Dwelling as. A structure, regardless of whether it conforms to zoning. Including use requirements and dimensional requirements, such as setback, setbacks, bulk, and height. That contains at least one dwelling unit. So. Principal dwellings in theory are more than just houses. If there's a building, you know, like, whether it's a mixed-use building or some other kind of building that has a dwelling unit in it. Then you can have a principal, or sorry, uh, an A D U. On the lot, so far as it. Complies with all the other things we've been discussing, but. So, so I think it's, it's just the important point is principal dwelling. Is a unit, is not necessarily a, a house.
Right. But having it only in districts where we actually allow residential homes, I think would be. Um, would just make sense.
That would be consistent with how the statute is written.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Uh, just to digress a little bit, how do restrictive covenants affect? Uh, a person's ability to build an A D U, if I live in a development. And I need permission of the homeowners association, if I live in a development that doesn't want A D Us. And, and there's restrictive covenants already in place that bar me from putting another structure in my area, is that? Um, those restrictive covenants no longer apply, whether it's for commercial property, residential property. Uh, does it no longer apply because the governor said you can build an A D U by right?
I don't think it mentions it in the regulations or the statute, but generally restrictive covenants are. You know, enforced as if they're contracts, so. You know, for example, if you have a homeowners association and it says that. You cannot, if you live in this neighborhood, you cannot build a shed. You know, you know, your town zoning by law might say that you can have a shed. But you're part of a private organization that everyone has agreed that there is no sheds, so. If you go to, if you go get a building permit, or go try to get a building permit, the building inspector isn't gonna look at your homeowners association. But, you know, if you start building a shed and your neighbors and association notice, then they can. You know, take private action to stop you, so I think that's similar here where. If A D Us are not allowed in a homeowner, owners association, it doesn't matter if they're allowed in the town. Cuz, you know, everyone's bound by contract and it gets enforced privately.
Cuz the governor didn't give me the by right ability to build a shed. But she did give me the by right ability to build an A D U, but you're saying it, it's still. Uh, a contractual agreement that I have with the homeowners association. Whether it's in a commercial development or a residential development, and I'm bound by the restrictive covenants.
Yeah, and, and all the, in general, you know, the, the primary purposes. You know, of homeowners associations is to be more restrictive than what's generally allowed in the town, so. I think it's fair to, you know, include A D Us into that. But if the association doesn't allow them, then you can't build them. But, no, that's, but that's, uh, but I guess the general point is that's kind of outside of the.
Yeah.
Planning boards purview, that's more of a private issue between, you know, members of. Homeowners associations that might have to deal with this, they can, they can deal with this at their yearly meeting.
Gary, there's precedent in our neighborhood, if you're, if you're thinking about adding one, I can tell you about that separately.
No, I, I was, uh, I was just thinking people could create homeowners associations on a. A small street that's a cul-de-sac and say, that's it, we're a homeowners association, we now have restrictive covenants. Um, I, I guess it's possible.
That might happen.
Yeah.
That's a good point, I thought, I thought you were trying to get out of our.
Uh, Tony, as I'm looking here, I wanna make a. I think an amendment to a revision here, I think we need to hack. Read the, the, um. Age restricted. Actually, hold on, let me go look in the bylaw, so. The C four district, which is essentially the Rivers Edge district. See the bottom there, it says yes. Second requires to. Allow them there, in the C four?
Well, that's, is it Rivers Edge and the commercial building at Rivers Edge, right next to it?
Yeah, well, it is, I'm the district, yeah, it's, uh, the commercial building, but it's also, uh, Penn Oaks, which is there, so there are. There are other properties in that C four district.
Oh, so this is, so this is the problem, right, so. The thirty thousand foot view is we're talking about single-family residential districts.
Yeah.
Oh, uh, you know, the regulations expand that to everywhere in town, and then they say a primor, a primary dwelling is any unit. But. You know. I'll have to think about that, and, like, talk tomorrow, that's a, that's a harder question than I'm willing to answer off the top of my head.
Okay, alright. So that. Gary, did we essentially cover all your comments as we've gone through this?
Yes, you probably noticed that I was sneaking them in one at a time, uh, as we were talking, uh, but.
Yeah, no.
I'm, I'm fine.
That was very good, did a nice job.
Good to be thorough, Gary.
Seasoned, uh, experience, so now. Did you wanna circle back? To some larger topics that you would wanna submit comments on? Relative to the bylaw too, well, actually, yeah. Yeah, I can go, yep, hold on, I'll put the table back up.
So we have three residential zones, why don't we list them, we list out everything else out separately, why do we lump all the residential's in one column?
The only difference is, uh, so this is the use table, the. The uses are all the same in those three zones, the one, R one, two, and three. The only difference is dimensionally, so that's why we just, in the use table, just have it as one.
Is there any other, I, we, we had that problem before where we had to split off and we tried to lump them together.
So we split off, the table's pretty good to see this, right, so we split off. The C one, A, B, C, and D, because it was, remember, different uses in the different districts.
Yeah, five and six or something together too at one point, I think.
To the highway, yep, and so we split those two off. There isn't. There isn't a use. That's allowed in the R one. That's not allowed in the R two and three, vice versa?
Would it be used to only say R one, comma, R two, comma, R three, or is that, is that just understood that it's all three?
Well, we could put all, if you want, we could put in.
You wanna just put R one through three, Eric, do you think that would be sufficient?
I just looked at the map and I see R one, R two, and R three listed separately, but. It, it just doesn't line up with the map right now.
Yeah, no, I get it, I mean, we could, we could propose in this to make it R one. Dash three. Well. I don't wanna get back into this whole dash thing, we had problems with that before, but, um. R one, comma, two, comma, three?
I, I think that makes sense, I. I know what you're getting at, but. Everybody may not.
Does everybody get what I'm talking about or no?
I think so, I don't, I didn't understand the part about the comma, I don't think I knew, maybe I just forget.
So originally, we had C. Two dash four. And then. We changed the use table because actually there is no longer a C dash two district. So we changed it to, I think that is right, to C. Dash four. I think I'm right, Eric, is that about right, I'm trying to remember how I.
Five and six were, were lumped together in one column, and we realized they had to be.
Yeah, five and six were one as well, three and, it was two. Well, actually, in fact, I think three and four were lumped in as well, B, B three and four.
I mean, is it just as easy, I, I mean, we probably don't expect that anything's gonna change in the other residential districts, right? For, we haven't talked about any of that for a long time, well, ever, actually, I think since I've been on the board, but, um. Could we just do like, R and then in parentheses, like, all residential districts or something like that, or? Do you have, do you want them all to be?
I think parentheses one, two, and three all in there.
Just so that, yeah.
Looks like what the map looks like.
That's easy.
Yeah, yeah, no, we could do that. Alright, so we'll, we'll add that.
Um, and then you were asking Rich about the comments, the public comments to be submitted.
Yeah, I guess the thing, yes, for sure, I guess, do you wanna talk about that first, or do you wanna? Vote this version with the edits. That we went over as the final draft that will be. For the public hearing on the twenty seventh.
Do we wanna do that now, or do we want to wait until Chris and. Um, Chad have a chance to watch this recording? And then make sure that they agree and they have time to review all the documents?
We are. Up against the clock.
I thought we were leaving it open.
Well, we're up against the clock to at least have a final version. To publish the public hearing notice on.
Oh, okay.
It's okay to make further edits, it's just what we're gonna publish to start with.
Right, and our next two meetings are so close together, we have one on the twenty first and then the public meeting on the twenty seventh.
Yeah, and Betsy has to, you know, she's already pre-drafted the notice, but it's gotta be, it's gotta be, um, sent in. Thursday for a Monday runtime. To give us the fourteen day notice.
Okay. Um, we talked through a lot of little details though, can we approve? Based on our discussions here about all of the things to change, or do we have to go through a whole list and vote on each one?
So Tony, if I, if we finish up cleaning up, send the final version tomorrow. And then the board can individually say, yep, that's, that's it. We can do it that way, right, something like that?
No, I think it has to be approved at a meeting.
Let me try, uh.
Approved subsequent to the changes we discussed.
We will.
And you don't have to vote on each change, you know.
We can just say, as, you know, the changes as discussed.
Yeah.
Reviewed as reviewing the document or something.
That's essentially what I was saying, it's just you're not gonna be able to, you'll.
Yeah.
We're gonna send it what it.
You can vote. You can vote, you know, change it as discussed, and then the actual version that gets. Sent out for publication will show those changes, and then, you know, everyone, you know, will have noticed, and then when you have the public. Hearing, we can, everyone can talk about it, and you can, you know, change anything you need to then.
Yeah.
Okay.
So essentially, Chad and Chris can.
Cuz this is, this meeting is just, you know, for going over things and. About it, you know, somewhat informally, you know, the, the, the public hearing is what's actually required. For amending the zoning by law, so, you know. But anything, if you do vote tonight, you know, you gotta vote here in person, you can't do it offline.
Okay. Um, so Gary and Eric, do you feel comfortable voting on this tonight?
I do.
I do.
I do as well.
So we'll need a motion in a second, and roll call.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, so, when I make a motion, so make a motion to approve, um, the accessory dwelling unit by law, section. Three, ten, dash, six, dot, fifteen. And just say, with the. Changes that we've discussed throughout the meeting, that are at the meeting tonight, January seventh, throughout this meeting, is that, is that good enough?
Do you have the, the, um, do you have the copy of the agenda that you can look at?
Yes.
That'll probably, that can, I, I think that will help you, cuz you can, cuz Betsy has the. You know, the three, ten, two point one, which is definitions, three, ten, six point one five, which is new, and then. Three, ten, four point two, which is amended in the use table, as discussed.
Oh, here it is, okay. Alright. Okay, alright, and make a motion to approve. The accessory dwelling unit, um, document as reviewed tonight, one twenty seven, twenty five. Uh, to see if the town of Norfolk will vote to amend the Norfolk zoning by law by adding the following new language. Section three, ten, dash, two dot one, definitions in alphabetical order. Number two, to see if the town of Norfolk will vote to amend the Norfolk zoning by law by adding the following language. Section three, ten, dash, six, dot fifteen, accessory dwelling units. And number three, to see if the town of Norfolk will vote to amend the Norfolk zoning by law by adding the following new language in bold print. To section three, ten, dash, four dot two, schedule of use regulations, attachment one. Um, with the changes and edits that we've discussed throughout the meeting tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Alright, roll call.
Alright, uh, Gary?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Gary Searle, your, your opinion, sir?
Uh, I would vote I as well.
And I vote I as well.
Alright. There are, I know there's some non, uh, planning board members on Zoom, I don't know if you wanted to. Any of them had a question or anything they wanted to ask?
Thanks, Rich, Peter diving here, can you hear me?
Peter diving here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I know you just voted that through, that schedule the use tables, are you gonna permit ADUs in every zone? Other than residential?
So that's what we were saying, we wanna put that, we, so there is an open comment period right now with the state. Um, and so it ends on the tenth of January, and that was something that we, we wanna put a comment back to them about, which it sounds like is a pretty common. Uh, it's pretty common feedback so far, um, but we, originally, the statute had said it was residential. Uh, districts, and that's what we had been basing our, um, our planning on, and since then, it sounds like the regulations. The definitions describe something different, so I think we need to put in a, a comment to clarify that and express that we would like it to be. Residential only.
Okay. Wouldn't Norfolk be safe to just commit it only in residential, cause that's what the statute says? If we voted it that way and it went forward to the attorney general, they, they really would have no reason to not. Pass our regulation. Given that. Um, I'm emin our zoning by law. Uh, the attorney general should accept it if it's uh consistent with the uh statute, whereas. Seems like the regulation, as you've discussed here, is inconsistent.
So Peter, that, that is what their, the, the, the version after through tonight, it will be. Consistent with the statute, not the regulation.
Thank you.
And Peter, the feedback is supposed to, we should have it back. We should have the additional guidance back from the state on, I think, last time I. Last time I had heard it was, I think, February first or second, um, that they plan to provide the next, uh, you know, their guidance or. Uh, next version of regulations, however they worded it, but they're supposed to be on February first. So we have our public meeting um on the twenty seventh of January that we plan to leave open. Until our following meeting, so that we can see what comes back from, um, you know, this comment period and what their revised documentation looks like.
Understood, thank you.
Is there anybody else on Zoom? Don't see anyone else, I would uh suggest move into. I think we already kinda talked about one of the comments, uh. I'm presuming the board would wanna have submitted that. This should, the regulations should be consistent with the statute, in terms of where ADUs are allowed. By right and by special permit.
Yes, and I would, I would like it to go back to being residential only personally.
Right, so. That was one. I guess the other, so one other one, I, so if you don't have, well, so one of the other ones, I think would be potentially important. And is that. The regulations are proposed that prohibiting short term rental. Is a unreasonable. How do they phrase it?
Reasonable regulation.
Yeah, reasonable regulation.
If. If the short term, if the short term rental prohibition. Not consistent with general law, chapter sixty four G. Which. Um, I have pulled up here.
So if, if we apply.
Relates, but.
If we apply something prohibiting SDRs across the town, not specific to ADUs or anything, it's. Like. We, we can do that, can't we?
I think so, yeah. Yeah, you can ban them.
Wait a minute, you mean uh Airbnb across the town?
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying if, if there's a limitation, potential limitation in saying. Short term rentals are, you know, don't apply to ADUs. And the, and we as a town, I'm, I'm just, this hypothetical are saying, we're not comfortable with that. We would have to, in order to get that, we would have to apply it to. To the town, not, not specifically to ADUs. I'm just trying to make sure that I understand.
I think I get what you're saying, because you can't have it for the ADU, because it can't be more restrictive than a single family home.
Yeah.
Well, this. Yeah, that. Tony, Tony, you can gather your thoughts, but as far as I understand, we can't ban. Short term rentals townwide.
Why, plenty of other towns in Massachusetts have limited.
Yeah, I know, I know. In gen, so outside of ADUs, you can ban short term rentals. Um, the statute says that um. You know, they, they are subject to additional restriction, restrictions as may be imposed by a municipality. Including but not limited to prohibitions on short term rental. So you can, you can, the statute says you can prohibit short term rentals in ADUs. Uh, and also, you know, if the town, and if the town in general allows short term rentals, you can still. Ban them for ADUs. Uh, so it's not one or the other, you can, you know, you can pick and choose, but if you wanna, if you wanna prohibit them for the ADUs, the statute says you can.
I thought Gary, you were. Correct me if I'm wrong. So I'm thinking that you're talking about banning them townwide to.
Sorry, I, I think I misunderstood some, I, I thought we were talking about. We're trying to limit short term rentals. Uh, as they apply to ADUs, then that would not be okay, because that would be restrictive or, or. So I, I misunderstood that. Apparently, that's something that's well within our rights, so I, I just misunderstood that piece.
Yeah, so, so that, that's one of those ones that, yes, in the statute for the ADUs, you can ban short term rentals. It's just that in the proposed regulation. They're suggesting they be in HLC, that that's a. Unreasonable regulation, unreasonable. Considered. The following, un, un, unreasonable, re, restrictives in regulations considered unreasonable is. Prohibiting or banning short term rental.
But also, oh, this is a little goofy, but. At the top of the proposed regulation. They use the same definition of accessory dwelling unit as the statute does, which includes the language. Such additional restrictions as may be imposed by a municipality, including but not limited to prohibitions on short term rental, so. The top of the regulation says one thing. The unreasonable regulation portion of it at the bottom. May say the opposite, so. That's something that, it might be worth a comment, and, you know, hopefully will get changed through their uh review process.
Yeah. Does that make sense? That one? That's second. To me, the third is for sure site plan review, again. It's something that is uh permissible by statute, and they're trying to suggest it's unreasonable.
Well, the board just vote, you know, the board voted to include that in this uh draft.
Right, yeah, right, so. Alright, so what's a reasonable number of topics to cover? Three, four, two, feeling?
It depends how long, you know, you could write a book about why. X, Y, Z topic needs to be reconsidered, or you could, you know, pick three or four. And write a couple quick sentences that are straight to the point. Um, so it depends how. Detailed each criticism, you know, needs to be.
Having the statute match the regulations, I think, can just be one, right? We don't have to call out every. Contradiction that should just be, I feel like that should just be standard practice. Or anyone, any organization, um. One might think or expect, um, and then for the other, I mean, and then it's just a couple more, right? The stuff that we had talked about.
I don't think you have to leave anything out. Based on what we talked about, I think you can include, you know, a brief or a little bit more than brief comment on each of those topics.
Um, okay, so certainly the zoning districts being single family, would it be the preference? And then what, um, what else do you have on your list, Rich, that you wanna comment on?
Allowing banning short term rental. Um, again, allowing consist. Consistency uh in terms of the site plan review. So really, it's. I guess I would say bullet item, the regulations should be consistent with the statute to. Limit ADUs to the residential zoning districts, not broadly inter, broadly. Kinda could wordsmith it, but you know what I mean, broader allowance that it goes townwide. Second, uh. This, the statute allows for site plan review, so that should be allowable. Uh, provision for the, for the municipalities to, to. Require site plan review, and the third is the short term rental, which is. Again, specifically allowed to be prohibited in the statute to, for towns to be able to do that as well. And then if individuals wanted, you know, I, I. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't, I don't think. You're not barred from commenting on your own either, I mean, just clearly. If you were to do that, just make it clear that you're commenting not as a. I mean, you have to tell them you're a plan board member, right? You could just say, I am, you know, Gary Sullivan. Or this is not a, my comment's not representative of the board, but I don't know, something along those lines.
No, you just say it's in your individual capacity.
Yeah, individual capacity, there you, thank you.
Yeah, and so for the public comment period, yeah, I imagine it's open to everyone. It's just, I wrote it down from the training. It's mass.gov. Slash ADU, so, pretty generic.
Yeah, and there is actually, um, I don't know if you. There is a virtual, um.
Yes, there is.
Yeah, if you wanted to.
So the comment period closes on the tenth, which is the same day as the public hearing. So I guess they're gonna hear people out on that day, and then also have all of their, you know, all of the written feedback collected. And you can be in person to be heard, you, there's speaker sign up, but it's, you can either sign up to speak, or I assume you can just sign up to. Join and, and listen in, right? I'll have to look, I haven't signed up yet, but I was planning to, um, and not necessarily planning to speak unless we had something that we wanted to speak about, but. Um, just being on the remote meeting to listen along to what other towns are saying.
Yeah, let me look at the.
I wrote down that if you wanted to, that all the information was gonna be on mass.gov slash ADU, so let me just look that up.
Yeah, so there's a. You have to register to attend and or speak at the public hearing. I'll forward to the link to everybody. If you wanted to, uh. And then within, within that email, there's the link to, if you wanna submit out your own comment.
Okay.
Public comment form. Alright.
Perfect.
So for clarity's sake, I think I'll. Just recap with you, Melissa, in terms of before we. Uh, or, or you can actually probably submit on behalf of the plan board, as I, I'm. Let me just hit the link.
What's today, the seventh, so it closes on Friday, um. Yeah, and I have time this week, Rich, if you wanted to connect and we can. Figure out who's gonna submit and just submit the questions that we talked about on this call.
Yeah, cause there is a. So I'm looking at as a checkbox, topics that you wanna comment on. There's a drop menu that. You know, what your role is in terms of. Public official, yeah. Why don't we do that, and then I can just review with you, then ma, you know, make sure to read it right, and then, cause there is a. There is a section here where you can drop in. Or, or excuse me, you can type in. The comment.
I hope they put a character limit for their own sake.
Um, probably is. There also actually is a section where you can um attach written comment. Is it, so there's a couple. Actually, maybe. I'm just taking this through. Tony, what I'm thinking. Is the comments the plan board just made in, in their official capacity. Write a letter, include those comments. Melissa could sign it, and then we just upload it as an attachment.
That's fine.
Do it that way.
Yeah, we can do that, and if it's, um. If you guys have time to type it up this week, the letter that's official from the town, I can stop by, um, whenever, tomorrow or Thursday, can pop by.
Yeah, we will make time. I'll shuffle the deck too, cause it's time sensitive, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, uh. That kinda concludes the. Discussion points for tonight that I had, that I wanted to review with everybody.
Okay, nothing else? No town planner updates or? Anything that, we're gonna save those for the next meeting.
Peter has his hand up here.
Question on the ADUs, Rich, uh, I brought it up at the last meeting about how the town might. Assign an address to the ADUs, uh, do you have any more insight on that? Uh, would it be like one twenty three Main Street A, one twenty three Main Street B? Or if it's a basement, one twenty three Main Street basement, uh, just curious.
Thanks for bringing that up, Peter. That was actually on my list from last meeting. To look into that, and then we had the holidays, and I haven't, I haven't had a chance to. Have you, Rich?
I did, so it comes. So the address assigned does come through the land use department, but what we do, what we actually just recently did, which is kind of interesting. Um, is that the uh. We communicated with the MAC, the uh regional dispatch. And reviewed it with them as well in terms of the addressing. Um, so we would involve them in terms of what their suggestion would be too, so police and fire. But now we did just recently, for example, we had a. We had a street where there was an A and R lot that you all approved. And the sequencing was. Really wanted to have somebody renumber their address, so it followed sequentially on the street. And the home, the homeowner refused. I get it, I understand. Um, so anyway, the end result is that we, I think Betsy was a forty two A?
Yeah, that's what we decided.
Forty two A, so that's. That's how we're gonna, you know, so to answer your question, we're gonna have to work with. that's how we're gonna, you know, so to answer your question, we're gonna have to work with police and fire and regional dispatch in terms of how we're gonna address these units.
So that would be something that we could do at the planning board stage and review. Maybe.
Yeah, if we can get a yeah. So to make sure, but, yeah, I don't see why not.
All right, are there any other, anything else that we have to go over or any other questions?
No.
All right, good, because my computer is acting up. Uh, okay, so should I make a motion to adjourn then? Ready?
I know, I'm ready, I don't know.
Here's the thing up your back, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And then we have to do roll call, right? So Gary?
Aye.
There's two of us.
Okay. And uh Gary Searle?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you very much.